So this is December sixteenth, the Webster Planning Board meeting, regular meeting. We're gonna start by taking attendance as we usually do.
Susan Young.
Adam Mock.
Craig Fornier.
Marlo Herrick.
So we have four out of the five members present tonight.
Definitely a quarrel.
Definitely a quarrel. And Kathy is not here tonight either. Okay, let's go for the driveway permit. You wanna talk about the driveway permit?
Sure. So I purchased that land just a couple of weeks ago and it's two parcels. I believe right now I'm in the process with Russ and combining them from two parcels to one because I think it just makes a lot of sense. They're contiguous. So inside of there, it's kind of mucky and it's overgrown brush. I would say within that full acre, there is probably maybe about half a dozen mature trees, large like maples. I think there's a couple of, it's hard to tell without leaves on there, but there's not a lot of mature trees inside of there. It's all just brush. And so when I walked it out with Emmett Bean,
Yep.
I walked up the property with him. He seemed to know every inch of Webster, to be quite frank with you. He pointed out everything that was there that I already was aware of, that there was a culvert on the far right-hand side and that seems to just be wet where the water kind of stands and meanders and heads down towards what I would assume is Pillsbury Lake on the backside. Oh, that's where it naturally drains to. So I have drawings over here, but about, I think about thirty or forty feet from the property line on the left-hand side, which I think is the address is fifty-four Centennial, there seemed to be a natural opening that would allow to put a driveway through there and then a turnaround is kind of sort of in that, in that middle, however you want to sort of define that. And Emmett was like, yeah, this seems to be a natural spot for it. And he pointed out to me that the way that the land or the grade of the road is from the left-hand side, the water comes down Centennial and it seems to land inside, inside the lot. And so what he said was what we'd end up doing is put a driveway in that would be about fourteen feet and about thirty feet in. Underneath that, he recommended an eighteen-inch culvert, which he said was just no different than the other ones. He's gonna put these in all the time. That would just simply mitigate any water that would be coming down the road when it rained or whatever it is, and then we'll just continue on its way versus pooling on the left-hand side of this driveway. So because if you just went over here, it's just gonna continue on its merry way and then kind of just go out where it is. Like I said, I assume it looks like it's flowing downhill and going towards Pillsbury Lake on the backside. So he goes, yeah, that, that really shouldn't be a problem. The, the low brush of anything that seems to be like ferns or anything growing around in that area, quite frankly, I think it's because it's, it's always damp there and there's no sunlight getting through because it's just brush. I mean, you walk through there and you're just, it's just scrub brush. And like I said, if you walked it out, there's maybe about half a dozen mature trees. And I'm, I'm, I even think it's less than half a dozen, to be quite frank with you. There was one big monster that was up. That canopy takes up a lot of the sky, but everything other than that is probably less than ten, twelve feet. It's just, you know, watch where you're walking because the roots are every place, so to speak. I asked Emmett, I go, you understand? He probably goes, no. He goes, if you're just gonna clear all this brush, just scrub brush, clear this all out, we'll be able to have a pad port here, have the turnaround attached to it, kind of like a fly swatter or whatever, whatever you wanna call that shape, put the culvert underneath and have the water just continue going through. He said, I, I don't see why there'd be any problem with that whatsoever. So I was like, okay. He goes, just apply for the permit because you need a permit for a driveway and the turnaround. I said, okay. I said, yeah, any reason why you see this is gonna be a problem? He goes, no, not really. It just seems pretty straightforward as long as you put the culvert in. And I said, yeah, well, I'd probably have you do the work since you know what you're doing around here. He goes, yeah, put a culvert in. That'd be the eighteen-inch one. I said, okay, great. And then that was the end of it. So I applied for the permit and then the other gentleman, I think his name is Paul.
Paul, so old Paul seen it?
Yeah, just, so this, I was told he had seen it and then there was, and that really, I never spoke with Paul. I've never seen anything from him, so I don't really know. I spoke with Emmett and said, you know, do you see any reason why? He goes, no, I'll speak with Paul. He goes, Paul is above me as far as all this process goes, but he just said, I don't, I'll speak to him if I get a chance, whatever it may be, but maybe he's not aware you're gonna put a culvert in, all those other things. And he just simply said, you know, I'll, I'll just track him down if I can see him. That was the end of it. Because that was only been like in the last week or so. It hasn't been, and against Thanksgiving and all this other stuff in between. So I just said, all right, I'll just wait until today because it was fast approaching anyway. So the drawing that I supplied, which I think you might have in your hand there, right? It, yeah, it's a very basic sketch that I just kind of drew up because again, I deferred to Emmett to simply say, there's no real specific thing like I have to have, I want it to be this thing. I just said, whatever you see that makes sense when you're putting this in, you know, just, just do. I'm not, there's no like, I need to have it be three degrees to the left or...
Well, I, I went down there this weekend, looked at the property.
Yep.
And I saw the two iron stakes on, on each side. I didn't see the one in the middle.
I'm sorry, when you mean, what's an iron?
The boundary markers.
Oh, okay, yeah, I saw the one on the left-hand side.
Yeah, and I saw the one on the right-hand side.
Yes.
But there's nothing in the middle when you got the mark.
I, I couldn't, I couldn't find anything and by the, by the description of the lot, it seemed to be a pretty much a square when I, when I saw the aerial of it. So we just, so what I ended up doing was I put a mark on the big, on one of the trees there to make sure that we were, because I believe that you were supposed to be ten feet at least, and we were probably from, from where I had, again, assuming a ninety-degree because that's what it looked like on both of those pipes and looking at straight out, we are within twenty-five feet from anywhere near the, the border of, of the next neighbor.
Yep.
So I made sure that we were well within that.
Twenty-five feet? We have a fifty. You have to be, you... Pillsbury Lake is lesser restrictions.
Yeah, you don't have a two acre, you know.
Yeah. I'm glad they're combining the lots because each one individually is not enough to do anything.
Well, I mean, I don't know why they didn't do that originally, so I just filed the paperwork because I thought it'd just make life a heck of a lot easier.
So when I looked at the property, over, over in this corner, right, right there, right? Over in this corner.
The culvert corner, sir?
Well, there's two...
I don't know, I don't know. I'm trying to...
There's two culverts.
Okay.
One doesn't go to your property, it's over here. And the other one does go to your property and it's...
Over around here, by the, by the zero of the eighty point zero?
Yeah.
It's around that mark.
Right, that way. Anyway, right close to the boundary of your neighbor on the curve there.
Yep.
That's, looked to me like the only high and dry spot in that whole lot. I mean, the rest of that was pretty wet.
So that's interesting that you say that because when I went where, where I have this marked
Yeah.
is when we had walked out that property after it had rained pretty hard for about two days.
Yeah.
And that was the driest spot.
Where you've got the driveway.
Yeah, exactly. That was the...
I, I didn't see that. Are you gonna fill in there?
Yeah, that was, the plan was, and again, I was deferring to Emmett, but the idea from what he had said from the road, so there's a couple of things that I'm not really, clearly not expert in. The distance of what this town owns in was, so I think he had mentioned there's a, a mark from like the center of the, of the road into where the town would actually own land into it, right? So from the, from the Centennial Drive, the hard asphalt in, I think we, we estimated about ten feet or something like that in. So it was, it drops down as you, as you remember, Craig, right? It, it drops in. And so that pitch, when we walked it out to the center area, if you will, from where I'm planning on doing or want the, the turnaround,
Yeah.
I think that was about, about, I'm gonna say about like two feet, going up about two feet from that area there. We wanted to make sure that we, according to Emmett, he was like, look, if you raise that up over here, that'll be dry. It's just gonna be fail. And then he goes, just wanna make sure that we keep it far enough away from that big tree.
Yeah.
So we don't kill it.
Yeah, there's a big nice maple in there.
Yeah, that was the one that we wanted to make sure that we don't cover up too much because it will kill it.
Yeah, so I'm concerned, this was a pretty wet lot, as you, I think, I saw it. And I'm concerned that you're gonna, you're gonna have to fill in there to get, to get up to...
Oh, no, that's, that's right.
And so the fill, I believe, is gonna require a DES permit.
I, I, I mean, again, I'm deferring to everything when I spoke with, with, with Emmett.
Yeah, but...
I don't know that.
Sounds like it if it's wetlands.
That's what I'm thinking. It's really wet in there. If you're gonna do any filling in there, as I said, the only dry spot I saw was over this corner where you want, propose the driveway and everything is, is all fill in there.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, so this is the, this is the lot, right? So the culvert is around here, correct?
The other culvert, yeah.
Well, the only culvert that I'm aware of that's on the property.
Yeah, meaning, meaning what you, yeah.
Yeah, and so what you're referring to is if I look at this where it says ten dash five three, the physical numbers of that?
Yeah.
So in between where it says point five eight acres and the ten point five dot three, right? Is that the area that you think is the driest? I just wanna be able to make sure.
What I saw is over here. This is your neighbor's lot.
That is my neighbor. The house is up here.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a, there's a wetland that goes, it kind of wanders through here like this. This is a wetland all through here. There's actually a, a stream and it goes to a culvert here, which is not on your property. And then over here, closer to your other neighbor, you have another neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, I meant her, her neighbor, yeah.
There's a culvert that goes under Centennial. It's fairly recent because you can, you can see the surface of the road. It goes somewhere in here.
So where's the one that I can see above ground? Because I see one that's around here that's coming off of, so this is Centennial, what's the name of the road that's here?
Rumford.
Rumford, yes. So by that, there's a, there's a culvert that comes out around the zero mark here. There's one, you could see it. It's a, it's an eighteen-inch black...
Okay. Maybe I missed, maybe I, I thought it was up here, but you may be right.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, the only one that I can see that's visible is, is this one here and it's on this lot.
Well, this, as I said, there's a stream that goes right through this running water.
So...
And it comes through this culvert, which is on your
Yep.
neighbor's property. It's not on your property. And then this area right here, that's the high and dry spot.
So, so I'm, I'm gonna respectfully tell you what my memory is of what I saw.
Okay.
So the culvert is coming out that's on the property is by this mark over here, right? And the wetland of that streamway that, that you're pointing out actually goes more like this and goes almost meanders all the way straight through. And then that goes, because, again, I'm just using logic, the reason why it feeds down this way is because here is Pillsbury Lake. This water comes down this way and feeds right into it.
Right, right.
So if it goes this way, it's going in the opposite direction of Pillsbury, which would make no sense by the way water travels.
Maybe I missed draw this, but it does come, like here's your buckle. It does come out through here, so maybe I drew that, but it does. This is, this is right on your property for sure.
Oh, no, no, I'm not disagreeing with you. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. The water comes out of this culvert and it really does follow out this path that's going out this way.
Yeah.
But it doesn't come into this area that I was, that I'm talking about as far as being dry. This area to me, this whole area on this side is actually pretty wet.
Yeah.
There was really no high side on...
The whole lot's really wet.
Well, I would, I would tell you, I've been out there three, two or three different times ironically. It's always been post-rained. And so if you're on this side, you're gonna lose a boot because it's, it's wet and mucky throughout here because of that stream.
Right, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
But on this side over here, it's not. I, I've walked this path through multiple times, going back and forth because I was looking for the markers here to see where they were. And it's, this area is dry. The only, the only little bit of mush is in clearly like low spots, but, but not even, like if you told me that I put down, you know, eight pallets on the ground and just screw them together, it'd all be dry. You're just walking through little ruts that were wet. The right-hand side, you're a hundred percent right. This side is wet and I'll tell you, it's mostly because it's directly relatable to, if this was a wetland, the only reason why this area is wet is because of that culvert.
I'm not sure. I think that's...
Have you had this perk tested yet for septic system?
I have no interest in putting a septic system in.
What are you gonna do?
So for me, I, I wanna be able to have, for the near term, I don't know what my long-term, you know, sort of plans are. My short-term plan is I don't wanna be able to keep my boat, I don't wanna keep my extra car or truck on, on Centennial. So to me, the logical thing was let me just get this in off the road, put a driveway and turnaround and then be able to figure out what's actually viable. I don't, I don't wanna, because I, I have no idea if I said, oh, I wanna put a park just because I wanna put a, a three-bedroom house in there. That's not really my plan, but I don't know, I don't live my life by ten years down the road. I live my life more like, hey, if I put my stuff off the road over here and then just see what's gonna happen, because for right now, I wanna be able to just keep like kayaked and my mountain bike and things like that there because I wanna enjoy Pillsbury Lake to go fishing and kayaking again. And then there's some really great trails around, just go mountain biking. So as opposed to schlepping everything with me all the time, if I can just keep it there, I was like, why wouldn't I? And then down the road, do I think I maybe would wanna build a small house or something like that on there? That's certainly possible, but I don't really know enough about the town to be able to commit to the idea of like, hey, I think I really wanna put a house here. But so right now it is just a, a, a lot that I can have dry stuff on, secure my things over there, put mountain bikes, kayaks and things of that nature there and then figure out what I would do next. And then I think those, the other things that would obviously come into play, I think a septic might be difficult, but I'm not there yet, to be quite frank with you.
Is there any other comment?
Do you think you might wanna put like a storage, like a garage or storage building?
So I, so the idea would be is for my understanding of the rules and regs within, and again, I'm very novice at this. I've only had a couple of inquiries when I spoke to a woman from the Pillsbury Lake
Association.
Yeah, and she seemed to be relatively new because I think a lot of people had changed during COVID. So it seems to be that there were rules about what you can do there if you don't have a house. So I did read the bylaws that were saying things like what you can and can't do. So I, I, I would say, I, I don't know. In, in a dream scenario, would I like to be able to put a storage shed or something like that? Absolutely, because it'd be more locked up. But in the meantime, it's like if I just keep myself off of Centennial, that would be great. And then I would probably go through the process to find out what would be permissible to put a shed or something like that there so I can lock things up. If you guys told me you knew the answer, if I'm able to do that, I'm open to hearing that. I have no idea. Because it seems to be, there's the Webster and then there's the, the lakes thing. So I've, I've heard that a couple of times, but I just don't know, you know, where, where the buck stops and who he, she, they say yes or no. So I, I don't know. I don't know the answer. I don't know enough yet. I just thought this was a pretty simple thing to, to look for.
Do we have any comments?
Russell, how about you? Do you know if they could put a shed up down there?
So they'd have to get permission from the district. So the town, not a problem.
Okay.
From the district, you'd have to get a permission from them because that's written into your deed.
Okay.
That's part of an easement restriction as you're subject to the rights of the Pillsbury Lake District.
Okay.
And part of that is the Building Control Committee grants permission to build any structure in the lake.
Okay, so I'd probably, I'd probably go through that.
And I'd get you a copy of them. I can email you.
That'd be fabulous, yeah. I'd be interested in something like that because again, that's babysit.
I mean, I don't know if it's the most current version of the rules, but that's the rules they gave me.
So Craig, as you were pointing out that you felt, are you trying to say that you felt from what you witnessed, this would be a better logical place to put in?
No, I think, no. What I'm suggesting is that any, what his proposal is gonna involve fill. And I, I believe that's DES. He's gonna get, have to get a permit from DES for that fill.
So, so how do we move forward for him then? Because I don't know.
Probably should get an engineer, right? To make it so it's, because he's, he can't just go in there and dump dirt if it's wet. You know that, I know that, correct? Can't, we can't get away with that.
Or do we even have the right to tell him that he can do that?
Well, it's not my, it, it's, it's the purvey of the state, the DES.
Right.
And he has to get a, I mean, the DES will tell him what he can do, what he can't do. We're not gonna say, all, all we're gonna say is before you get any kind of driveway or building permit, you need a DES permit. That's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Well, and, and that's only to protect you too. That's not just to protect...
I mean, I...
Only because you wouldn't wanna get that in there and then somebody show up from DES and then say to that you, you gotta remove all that fill.
And the thing of it is, if he's gotta put a culvert in, he's gonna have to get a permit for that, right? To, if, if to put a culvert in for driveway, he'll have to have that.
From Emmett?
Well, not necessarily from him too, but it's like if it, technically if it would, if it's wet, he's gonna need to get one from the state, right? A, a permit to put that pipe in, you know, if we were building a driveway and it's wet, wet land.
It's not a, it's not a state road.
Yeah, I don't...
I'm not sure he needs a...
No.
But when you talk to the DES people...
We just don't wanna see you put this in
No, no.
And have the DES come by and say...
And say you're done.
I mean, not saying that we want you to fill in wetlands, don't get me wrong.
No, 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 no.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, but I wouldn't wanna see him go through all the headache of getting yourself set up.
Oh, no, 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 I agree with that, but I, I have a question for you. When you, when, when you all are suggesting, and I'm not that, that it's a wetland, right? Is there something within the town right now that says this area, as opposed to it being wet, it's a wetland? Because a wetland is actually a legal definition and a term versus somebody saying to me, it's wet land, that, that, that could be a mucky pile or something to say, well, that's clearly wet, but that doesn't make it a wetland. So my question is within, within, is this recognized as being a wetland versus it just being, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Does it have all the brush in there? Is there all the brush in that?
It's, yeah, young trees.
Well, what's...
If I cut down all those young trees and all that brush, that's gonna dry up in about a month. It's gonna dry up in about a month. I, I do landscape design for a living.
I'm not convinced.
No, no, I, I believe you, but I'm just suggesting that...
Right now, we don't have a, a wetland ordinance that applies to this, okay?
Right.
All right. The only thing we've got is a driveway permit, right? That applies at the moment. And what we're saying is before we give a driveway permit, you need to go to DES and get up, have them look at it and say it's okay to fill in there.
So if I just understand this, currently, that land is not recognized as being a wetland?
In the town?
That's correct. No, I just want, I just want, I'm, I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear as to my understanding. So if it's not being deemed currently...
Well, we...
You, I'm just, I just wanna make sure because I like the legal ease of things being really specific because those things are specific. And when somebody says, well, I think that it's wet, that does not in and of itself define it to be a wetland.
So for your information, we had a, we hired a consulting company to go in around town.
Yeah.
And they mapped all the wetlands. There's, they mapped them in two, two categories, prime wetlands and other, I don't know.
Secondary ancillary, something like that, okay?
Yeah, and there's a map in the town hall. You can go in
Okay.
And Russ can show you and see if your property is on that.
Okay.
We don't have, at the moment, I don't think there's any ordinance that applies to this. In other words...
Well, in the ordinance, it does say if there are wetlands, we will do our best to route any driveway around said wetlands. So that's what it says in the driveway regulations.
So there you go.
No, 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 I understand, but we're still back to the original part, which is, 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 and I guess Russ would be able to know tomorrow, assuming he has the time to look at this, does my property fall within what would be defined from this consultant you had hired that is actually a wetland? If it, if it doesn't fall into that, then wouldn't this, and again, I don't wanna be jerky about this, but is this conversation moot? Because if it wasn't recognized as being a wetland, then what are we trying to avoid if it's not a wetland from a consultant that was hired? Are we just now just simply saying, maybe that's a wetland, maybe that's a wetland? And as opposed to it actually being recognized as a wetland? And if it's not, then I don't, I don't, I'm sort of confused as to why would I have to go back after a consultant has been here, again, under the idea that it's not been recognized and labeled as a wetland? Then why would I have to move further in having to prove that it's not a wetland? That's what I guess I'm confused by because then it's just more of bureaucracy kicking in for, for no reason.
I think what you're gonna have to do
Sure.
Get a permit for the culvert anyway. You're gonna have to get a permit from the state to put in a brand-new culvert. I'm almost positive that, because I went through this when I did a driveway over your neck of the woods and they made me get a permit
State permit, yeah.
To put that culvert in. So it would seem to me that if you've gotta go to get, get a permit, you're gonna have to, it's like a surveyor would have to draw you up a plan of where that cul, culvert's going because you gotta put one in, correct?
Well, no, I, so I, so I'm gonna get, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back this up a little bit. Don't mean, and disrespect to what your, the mindset, but is if in fact this piece of land is not recognized as being a wetland, right?
Yeah.
Then I should be able to get a driveway and the turnaround put in there and in all fairness, the culvert becomes moot. It's not a wetland. I don't even need to put the culvert in because what am I putting in? Because it's not a wetland.
Did Emmett say you needed a culvert?
Well, he suggested that. But again, if we're going by what he said, then I would have, I would have already been approved for all of this. I'm being, I'm, so if people are saying now, if he knows the town and goes, yeah, you shouldn't have a problem with this, but now it appears that if somebody's saying this could be a wetland, Russ will know tomorrow presumably, not, right? If this, if this falls within what those consultants said, this is a wetland. If it's not, then if it's not a wetland, I should be able to get a driveway and turnaround and wouldn't even need to put a culvert in because it's not even a wetland.
So say you go ahead and do all this, right?
Yep.
DES comes in, says, hey, you're done. And you're done. What are you gonna do?
Then I'm gonna simply say, there was consultants that went through here and this was not marked as being a wetland.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what, that's not how it works. Who's the consultant that did this?
The town.
Okay, all right, so you're backing that back to us as we're being the consultants?
No, no.
Okay.
The town hired it. GCA Environmental.
Right, but, but that's all for...
That would not become the Webster.
Yeah, that would be for Lake Winnapocket, all your major ones is all they did. They didn't do all the small wetlands.
Did they?
No, they did not. Right?
Oh.
They just did the major wetlands.
They just did the major ones, that's right.
Right. Pillsbury Lake, Lake Winnapocket, Blackwater River, all of them. Now, those are the only wetlands that that company did.
Well, that, that, that thing that drains in, that drains into Pillsbury, that's, that is, that is a wetland. Whether this is part of that or not is, is up in the air.
So I just don't wanna see him take and put this in. And then DES comes in and say, you're done, you've got a fine going.
Right. I'd like to see him run it by DES, that's what I want.
Right? What do you think? I mean, I wanna see him do it. It don't make a shit to me.
I'm just surprised, I'm sort of just surprised by the idea that, again, I mean...
I saw, I saw, I saw a pretty wet site there. I mean, there's a reason why nobody's built on that site before this.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know if that's true because the gentleman that was selling this lot, to me, was asking a lot of money. The way that it was being positioned as two separate lots devalues the asset. The idea there's a culvert, so you, I think there's a, I mean, I bought parts of land like this in the past where because of what I do for a living, it allows me to be able to look at this and simply say, you know, to, to divert the water of that culvert that's existing over there is the crux of it, but it stays on the low-end side because it feeds directly into Pillsbury Lake. The left-hand side going up towards the road towards fifty-four, my next door neighbor up that way, that's all dry because the water's flowing to the right because it's feeding towards Pillsbury. So the reason why I'm, I, I walked it out, I looked at this, I said, yeah, this is a pretty straightforward thing. And I've done this in the past, that if all that brush goes away, seventy percent of the sunlight's coming through because it's all, it's all just brush. It's all just...
I'm, I'm...
But, you know, again, you can disagree with me, I'm telling you, I've been doing for...
I think I'm disagreeing.
No, I've been doing it for twenty-one years. So I'm, I'm just telling you that I, I know that when I cut, when I cut down all that brush and the sun comes through...
It might be, it might be useful for other members of the planning board to take a look at this.
Where, where's, did Paul and, Paul and Emmett went out and looked at it?
Yeah, they did.
At different times.
And they didn't have any suggestion?
Well, Paul, Paul, I think said it had to go to DES, is what he said.
He did.
Yeah.
But Emmett felt that it was doable.
Yeah, it's certainly doable. I mean, you can, but you're gonna have to fill. That's the whole point is it's, it's wet enough.
Right.
Wet enough that you're gonna have to fill. And anytime you fill...
So, so again, I'm not disagreeing with you, but part of the thing was the reason why we wanted to fill was because of the drop-off from Centennial Road into the property. And if you look to the home to the left, they had to have filled at some point because it's much higher, like their home, if you just walked it out, there, there's no way that this just became a sinkhole. That property to the left-hand side had to have been filled as well just because it's well above grade to the road if you go straight in. Part of the reason why was because it's, it's like a thirty percent drop, so the only way to come off So the only way to come off the Centennial and come on in, the logic was unless you're gonna have a really steep driveway, was to fill. And Emmett didn't seem like he was like, yeah, it's pretty straightforward, it seemed to be.
Well, yeah, I mean, Emmett, Emmett is a, is a builder, constructor, fill it, yeah, I can fill it, we can fill it.
Well, we were mindful to be able to know of that large maple you saw there, that we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna wrap around that, cause it would kill it. And so it didn't seem like it required a tremendous amount of fill, but you're right, it definitely requires fill, but I think a lot of it was to mitigate the, the height.
Any other comments? Do you have anything, you have anything?
Yeah, I, I, if, if you have to get D E S involved anytime you fill anything, I don't know the D E S rules.
Well, neither do I.
So, yeah, so.
What do you think?
Well, for me, for me, for me, you know, you know, it, it happens every day, in a sense, but I haven't seen the lot, but.
Yeah.
I'm also, I can go, I could go either way, because I've seen both sides.
Right.
You know, as we're loggers and we, we, you know, we're, I, you know, sometimes you put, get the culvert in, you, you gotta put some stone in to get in, and then you, then you go to town, and, and, you know, I, I personally, I just think that I wouldn't wanna see, I don't know enough of that D E S rule for this type of situation on, on not where it's town land and where it's, where it's, you know, off, you know, if somebody's putting in a lot, what if they would have a hard time with it or not? I just would, I would feel bad saying, oh, yeah, go ahead, go for it, and, and then, and then D E S, you get in trouble, D E S.
Yes, I don't wanna see you getting in any trouble.
But I would hold you, again, for all fairness, I would hold you harmless to that. I mean, in other words, this is such a small nothing, that I, I just can't even imagine, um, again, once, in order to be able to put in, um, this, this turnaround on the driveway, I gotta go out there and clear a whole bunch of brush, right? And when, if you guys and I encourage you to go to take a look at this, once I clear out that brush, the sun's gonna come pouring through, it's all just scrub brush. I have a video, you wanna see a video of it? I have a video, I took a video of it from the, from that road to show you, not, not because of this, but I just.
No, 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 no.
Yes, if we could see it.
Sure.
I can see Russell whooping over there.
I wish Paul were here, because he's actually been there.
Well, he's been there too, I mean, that's, yeah, I'm not, and I'm not.
And this, and this is from the angles, just so, just so you know, this is from the angle of, seeing on Centennial from where I'd want the opening to be, because there seemed to be an opening. So let me just see, I'm really not great with this thing, so if you're better with the iPhone?
No, not really.
Okay. It's all scrub brush. The whole thing is just. Yeah, it is, yeah, so the culvert was down here, right?
It starts otherwise.
And where's, where's the driveway right here?
This is, it would be right in here, so this is the beginning of it, so I think I panned from the left.
Yeah, sorry.
So I'm assuming this is gonna start along.
Yeah.
So it is, the open would be here, right?
Where's the lot, right, straight back?
Right, straight back, yes, sir.
Kind of follow this map.
It was right exactly there, yep, and then now here's the road, so you can get a better view, like if I'm now panning, where the opening was, is right there.
Where did he suggest put the culvert in?
Right here, right?
It was gonna be inside on the, on the driveway, so this is it, someplace along this. He didn't say specifically, he just said you need, you should put a culvert in, because the rain.
Here.
Comes in this way down the road.
So he wasn't worried about coming off Centennial Drive with the culvert?
No.
He wanted it right here.
Exactly, just in case water's coming down the road from here, comes in here, we just continue down.
Well.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
This is Rumford Drive.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Right there, goes up, and right here, right here, the water comes down Centennial Drive this way, there's a culvert under the road, right here. And it comes right like this.
Oh, okay.
Feeds water there.
Hmm.
So if there's the culvert you're referring to, the only one that I saw was one that was here, it was on, not on this lot, it was on this lot, sir. Rumford's actually here.
It shows it over here.
Well, um, uh.
I see the map shows it here.
No, oh, Rumford?
Yeah. And this stream, this stream is actually on this neighbor property, and it crosses up somewhere in here. It's, it's running water.
No, I, I, I see it, absolutely.
Comes up through here, and there's a culvert under the road over here that feeds into this stream.
So the one that I see in that video, it's far off to the right, the only one that I can see exposed. If there's another one below, I obviously can't see that, but the only one that I can see comes out here. If you walk it out and you, and you take a look at that clearing where I am, again, you can see it, cause I painted on the road here where, where the expectation would be is.
Well, how about, how about, how about if we all make an appointment with you and go over it with you?
Um, well, I, I live over an hour away, um, I would trust if you all wanted to, uh, go out there on your own, I mean, I'm happy to be able to do it, it just, it's just kind of a, especially during the holidays, right now.
Yeah, no, it ain't gonna happen this week.
And then we also don't know, uh, Mother Nature, what curveball she might throw at us, even if we plan it out for the next following week, because who would've thought it'd be sixty degrees today?
As long as it wasn't sixty at my house.
It was, uh, sixty down in, in, in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I, I got to like forty-two.
Oh, well, we got.
But if we go individually, as long as it's right, then we're okay.
You mark.
Go individually, or you can schedule it as a meeting and I'll go and take minutes.
I, I, I painted on the, on the road where the driveway entrance would be.
Oh, you did?
I did, with mark and paint.
Okay.
Um, and so you can see that I'm clearly away from the, the marker, about twenty-five, thirty feet from, from the next-door neighbor. And then I would bet you dollars to donuts from where the right-hand side of my driveway is to the culvert, thirty-five to forty feet away is, is, it is further down the right-hand side, and I'm talking about the one that's visible, again, if there's one underground that I'm not aware of, certainly I, I haven't seen that one, but the only exposed culvert is, is right there, almost up against where that, or the next-door neighbor's right-hand side property is. It's, it's right there, um, so I would say that it's being fed in on the right-hand side of Rumford Road, and you can see the water.
Let's, um, there's too many unanswered questions here, I, I'm inclined to table this and.
For a month, yeah.
For a month, give us a chance to look at it, look into D E S.
Cause we don't meet again till.
No, I understand, I just wanted to be, while the weather was nice, I was just hoping that I can just actually get the thing done. That was my, I'm just telling you what my early Christmas wish was, it was just, cause it's just a driveway and a turnaround, I didn't think it was, uh. Okay?
And you can look at the wetlands maps and determine, can determine whether it is officially a wetland or not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'd be pretty sure that if it was deemed as a legal wetland, that when the, uh, the D E S things that were drawn up, it would've shown.
Let me, let me ask you a question. How, where, where, and this is kind of, this is a little bit of new ground for me. Where does, where does us as a town liability-wise, I mean, I know we wanna do the best for the town and the state and blah, 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 but, I mean, where do we have the right, in a sense, to say that he can't, that, that's, that's my.
Well, in the ordinance, it specifically states we can direct the driveway around the wetland in any chance that it's an occurrence to do it. So if there is a wet area, you can say the driveway can't go through the wet area, but you can do it around the wet area. That's what's in the current driveway regulations.
So can I ask a quick question? Based upon that, if I'm only going in, uh, sensibly into the middle, right? Wouldn't they, and I just wanna be clear, cause I don't understand exactly what you meant, wouldn't the water then just go around it if it were a wetland? So in other words, to your point of going around it, wouldn't, wouldn't, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be blocking it?
That's what the ordinance says.
Okay.
I'm not an attorney, I don't, I'm not a wetland scientist, that's what.
You're not?
The other, the other thing you should be aware of, that even though your property is not officially part of one of the major what, defined wetlands in town, okay? There are, there are definitions of what defines a wetland.
That's true.
In the state, in the state regs.
In, in every state reg, that's true.
That's right.
That's, that's right.
So you wanna make sure that, you know, what, how you relate to those regs.
And, uh.
And that liability would fall onto him, not us as the town, right? So if we were to, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm being devil's advocate, I, I get there's cautiousness here, but devil's advocate says to me that, you know, as long as there's not a more least resistance of approach, and that's why I asked you that question before. Is there a little, you know, could you come in from over here and it would be a little less, uh, you know?
And, 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 yes.
But, but, but that was, that's my question, cause you have visited and I understand, you know, I know you know what, what you feel is wet and not. Do you find there's another place on his lot that's less resistance? Is this the, is this the best path, best, best path of less resistance right there?
Probably is, uh, but it's gonna require fill, it's not, it's not a, it's not a slam dunk.
So, so my vote would be because of the way the regs read and the way things are, are set up, and correct me if I'm wrong, the only way that we as a planning board could deny him from putting this in, this driveway in, would be if there was another path of least resistance, otherwise, we don't have any right to tell him he can't do it.
Oh, we don't have any right to tell him that he can't do that, but it, and that, that, that's all well and good, but if he starts filling that, gets in trouble.
There again, there again, that's, that's, that would become his issue, not ours. I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm not trying not to.
No, 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 I get it, I get it, yeah, we just wanna go do it.
You know, I would believe Craig if he said to me, well, I looked at that and he, if he went in this way, and I might say to you, hey, what do you, what do you think? Can you, can we come to agreement to go in this way?
Cause I went with Emmett and he goes, this, this is the most logical spot, I didn't pick it, I said, he goes, this would be the lo, most logical.
Well, and Craig says, and I get where you're coming from, nobody wants to see, but I don't believe we have a right to tell him that he can't, because there is not a less.
An alternative.
An alternative.
Well.
So that's why I would vote to let the, let the gentleman move forward, but.
Okay, well, I, what, my feeling is that we should defer this for a month. Get a chance to look at it, maybe you can go out and take a look at it, and, um, we can come back and see what.
But what would that, what would that do? What would that do, in other words, if, if the logic is that there isn't.
You're saying, you're saying it's a bright site, and I'm saying it's a wet site.
So.
But, but I don't know that that's our, I don't know that that's our, I don't, I don't believe that that's our right, correct me, for us.
To tell him what.
To tell him what to do, that's right, I mean, tell him what to do in the sense that it's our, we need to take our, the, the, the least path of resistance, and it sounds like to me, from what you saw, what Emmett saw, that that's, that's it, and to me, that's more direct. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna do a lot less harm to the, damage to the rest of the property, so I guess I don't see the, the need in deferring him for a month because of that.
Okay.
It, so Paul, Paul's already looked at it and he's all cool with it?
He was the one who suggested bringing it to the whole board.
Yeah.
Paul was.
Paul was.
What about Emmett?
I don't think Emmett had an opinion on it.
Well, it.
Emmett, who said, he, he was, when do you want me to do it?
Yeah, so he's looking for the job.
Well, not really, because I had already had priced it out with a different gentleman, no, but he, but he was just like, he didn't see any, any issue with this whatsoever.
And we, and we depend on him as a town to give us, I know he gives a lot of people different driveway permits or not permits, and he's shut things down before because it's not correct, so.
Yeah.
I have no reason except that I'm not disagreeing with you, that it's a wet lot, but I guess, kind of knowing how our policy is written.
Right.
Tabling it for a month, in my mind, doesn't, isn't gonna get us anywhere.
I don't know. I'll be honest, I'm, I, part of me says we would not, it's not gonna come back and bite us. It would come back and bite you.
Right.
I'm with that, and it's your nickel.
That's right.
I, I, I would, uh, just to put things in context, if I really felt like something had my neck on the line, I, I'm not that much of a gambler. This to me is not really, this is, this is not, uh, this is not a gamble by any stretch whatsoever, I, I don't see why there'd be any issue. And certainly, again, my opinion, having done this for so many years, is once I get rid of all that low-line brush and the sun comes through.
Well, you know, there's another aspect to this.
Sure.
And that's that we're looking out to the future, okay? You may not wanna put a house in you, you may just wanna put a thing, but you're gonna sell it, but someday, you're gonna die and it's gonna go to somebody else, whatever.
Yeah, sure.
You know, we've all seen that.
I mean, unless you find a way around dying, I would say we're all, we're all full victim to that eventually, yes, I would agree to that.
I don't wish you anything bad.
I know, I, but I'm pretty sure death is on my horizon line, sir.
Yeah, yeah, same here.
Yeah.
So somebody else is gonna get that lot and they're gonna say, oh, it's a great spot for a house.
Okay.
And then they gotta say, oh, you know, oh, but we can't put a septic in or whatever, oh, we don't have this, blah, blah, blah. So it's, it creates a, it creates a problem for the future owners and it creates a problem for the town too.
I don't know, that people need to do their due diligence.
Yeah.
But, but I mean.
I don't, I don't.
So i- is, is the idea that you would feel that it is better that the previous owner has owned this for thirty years, has done nothing to it, and that in its, in its current state, that that's actually would be better off? Because I'm trying to be able to do something, so I'd rather find that if someone down the road were gonna be looking to put a septic in, I would consider that to be more of an advancement than having the person who owned it did nothing with it for thirty years. Um, I, I don't, I would disagree with you, then my, my opinion would be, is I think mine's more forward progress than what that gentleman did. Because if I had owned this land all these many years, I would, I would have fought a little bit more as to the location of that culvert, because it feeds directly into my property and therefore makes us so much more wet, that I think that I would've said to the town, if you're gonna put this culvert over here, do me a favor, just dig out a little bit more of a trench over here to make it actually a little bit more of a contiguous waterway, to actually just have the water continue going there versus just sitting there and standing, which is what it's doing, cause it's around these little roots and trees, that they just dug a straight path directed into that water, in that riverway that you pointed out. It would just, it would just continue going, right now, we're just sitting there and just, that's what makes it wet. Nobody decided to just put a little tobacco in there, go sixty feet, and the water would've just gone straight down the Pillsbury Lake. All they did was put a hole in there, put an eight-inch pipe, and said, here you go, and the water just poured into this guy's property and made it into wet, into wet, unbuildable land, but if the town simply said to me, I wanna do this, I'm like, no, just straighten this out and have it feed directly into this, and all that land would be dry, because I do this for a living, and I'll tell you right now, that's what people do with their property, they just simply don't say, hey, just have the water just dump into my property twenty-four seven, nobody would do that. He didn't argue for his, for his land, he should've argued for his land, cause you would've.
Do you have any final thoughts?
The more he talks, the wetter it sounds. That's how it sounds.
But there again, I don't think that we.
We can't stop it.
That's right.
Was it sold as a buildable lot, I'm just curious?
Um, it was, it was, um, it was not sold as a, so it was a couple little errors that were on there that I had to remedy. The original, the original thing said that it actually had a home, a building structure on it. So I had to make that change on there, but the deed was for thirty years or whatever it were, stated that there was an existing property and that that property there was actually used as the main residence or a main home, and I was like, that, that's just, that's wholly incorrect. Uh, there was no property there and this is not a main residence, so I made them change that.
That's right, it's not a main residence, not, I didn't go look in the archives.
Yeah, but those changes I had to make.
There was no, there's no lot of a property, there's no building.
Right, so I had to make that change, because it said on the thing that I was signing off, it's saying, this is gonna be your main domicile, I was like, no, no, there is no domicile there, there is nothing there. So I had to make that change, everything else is really based upon, um, just the fact that you have to deal with two towns, two, 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 uh, governing bodies to be able to just figure out what can and can't be done there, um, and they did point out that there was a culvert there. Um, but it was not defined, uh, and again, usually the realtors would go through it if it were legally defined as a wetland, it would be sold as that, which would then be, be unsellable. It's land that is wet, but is not a wetland.
I, I make a motion to, um, accept this. Our proposal, this driveway part.
Approve the permit?
Approve the permit, thank you, for the words.
Any discussion?
No, I, I'd say that if we approve it, that we approve it, it's fine, but he's, if he's in trouble, it doesn't come back on anything that we've done. You know what I'm saying? Like, he's gonna have to get a permit for that culvert, that's how that works. You know, you don't just go in and put a culvert in if this body wanted it, cause you will be in trouble because we'll be driving by.
Fair, fair enough.
Yeah.
All right, any comment or not? Any comment or not? Is this done? All right, let's take a vote on, well, I guess we have the second. Second, do we have a second for?
My second? Well, no, I'm in the motion, I can't second. Jeez, I'm gonna be fired already.
You were in the logging business?
Mm.
That what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I, no, I just never really met a wo- no.
Well, oh, me, well, yeah, and so was he.
Guys like him I've met.
Yeah.
Women, women in the logging business, I usually, I, you're, you're very rare to have met.
She's the queen.
They call the queen logger?
She is it.
Yeah.
She's probably one of the only women in the state.
And can you fell trees?
And she rules the roost.
Oh, well, I was gonna ask if she could fell a tree.
Oh, I'm just gonna tell people what to do.
She can do it.
Well, she just said she can.
But we have big machines that can.
That's, that's true, bigger than a Husky or a chainsaw, I was gonna say.
All right, do we have a second on this one?
I, I'll second it, 'cause I think if Emmett has looked at this and he thinks that this is doable without issues, he's probably all, all good, and that's the reason of being. That, that, I, I mean, I wish he was here and, and-
But same here.
But I believe that if there's gonna be a culvert put in, better have a permit. That's what I, no, that's what I'm telling you, you better have a permit.
All right, so-
'Cause you'll need it before you're done.
So, let's take a, let's, excuse me.
Sorry.
Let's take a vote here. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against this because I think it's a wet site and it needs a DES approval for fill, but that's my opinion. So, let's take a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Two against, all opposed.
I haven't, I haven't, I can't make a remark.
Abstaining?
But, but can I?
Can abstain?
I'm going to abstain, 'cause I honestly don't know. I'm gonna drive down and look at it, but-
But we can't, there's nothing we can do at this point to stop him.
No, I know.
That's why, I, holding people up to me, if, when we, I mean, hey, hey, if there was something that magically was gonna appear that, that, or that you saw that we couldn't see in the video, or Emmett missed, so-
Yeah, I, I respect Emmett's opinion.
Yeah, so, that's what I'm going with.
That's what I'm gonna go with.
That's I saw, yeah.
But he needs to have it done, it's not just throw it in and get away without a culvert permit, that's not gonna happen. You can guarantee that. Well, 'cause I have to get him, you're gonna have to get him.
We, we've let him know, but we're, we're, we, we're-
You let him know.
Yep, he's, he's a big boy.
That's it.
So, did that pass or not?
So, that would make it a pass because of, she abstained, it would be two to one.
Okay, so that passed, you got your driveway.
Okay, and I, I have a question for you, for, for you, 'cause I, I think you have a good sense of humor. I, I'm gonna double check now with Emmett, based upon that, whether or not I actually need the, the culvert.
That's fine.
No, 'cause I mean, 'cause if, if-
I know, I know you need it when you put a new pipe in, that you gotta have a permit.
No, I know, but now, now I'm second guessing the idea of whether or not I needed it, because that's a, just the materials alone for what you all do, like me.
Yeah, we know.
That, that material cost is scandalous. That culvert price for, 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 uh, twenty feet, it was, yeah, it was twenty feet.
Yeah.
Seven hundred dollars, yeah?
Oh, yeah, and you haven't picked it up yet.
No, two years ago, that would've been, that would've been a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Welcome to our world.
Yeah.
No, I, I deal with materials all the time, and well, it, it's just scandalous in what you're paying for, you know, and then we have now pay for labor. It's, is incredible. I don't know what you guys pay, but my rate for paying my guys, cheapest guys are thirty bucks an hour. Cheapest guys are just carry bags of cement for me, and like, I can't, otherwise they won't show up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so what else, uh, so the other thing I was gonna ask you is, the permit of consolidating those two, you wanted to mention that here.
Well, yeah, that's just the, that is just a mention that it's gonna happen.
Oh, okay, it's just a formality, I know.
It's just a formality that automatically goes through.
Okay, just wanted to just make sure that-
I just mentioned it to them and then I recorded, I'll be recording it, probably sending it to the registry on Monday.
No worries at all, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, consolidating them is-
And plus, they already know about it from seeing the maps.
Yep.
That's why I included it with the permit.
And then the, the, on the other side of the road, on the centennial side that abuts Rumford, that whole corner area there, there's some properties that you and I had discussed.
Yep.
If those things ever become for sale, let me know, I'll buy them.
So, there are a couple town properties.
Why, I have no idea why.
You're gonna corner the market in Pillsbury.
God bless you.
Yeah, well, the, the only thing I do know is that the family on the other side of it, I wouldn't borrow a cup of sugar from those guys, they scare the bejesus out of me, and I just drove by it, and I was like-
I think I am.
I don't know who they were, but I drove by, I was like, "No, no, no, not my cup of tea." Um, so if I don't hear from you all, have a great Christmas, appreciate your time and effort, um, and then I will speak with Emmett, I guess. So, when do I, when is it okay if I contacted Emmett, for example, and say, "Hey, let's do this?"
So, Emmett's gonna have to come by and the office, sign the permit, and I will discuss it with Paul, and then have Paul come by and sign the permit, once I get the minutes done.
Okay.
So he can see the motion.
So it'll be like, the next few days or whatever it may be.
It'll probably happen next week, somewhere, some point.
Next week is what, Christmas, right? Next week is?
Yep, yep.
Yep, already.
Good, 'cause once it's here, then it's over and then it's done.
One more after that.
All right, everybody, well, appreciate your time, uh, have a great Christmas.
You too.
All right, say it, everybody.
And the next one should be a pretty easy one, too.
This is just doing the-
Just doing the motion again, 'cause people were confused with what was said at the meeting, and when I did the minutes, it was also not clear, so to avoid confusion.
So, I want to make, um, I wanna say something for the record-
Yeah.
-on the, on the motion of the wetlands ordinance.
Okay.
So, um, as I've put a lot of thought into, you know, kinda stepping into this a little bit on the, on the backside, um, I definitely wanna say that I believe that there was a lot of time and effort, and that's very much appreciated, to, um, put these ordinance together. Um, but as a voting member of the planning board, um, I in good conscience can't vote for the, the new wetlands ordinance. Um, so I made some notes, just so I wouldn't, you know-
Yeah.
-forget what I wanted to say, but, um, I already said that I appreciate that, all the time and effort, and golly, don't I? Um, I get that they spent a lot of time putting this together, but I do feel like it's an overreach of government, um, and I think what it causes, you know, the, the idea that, um, somebody could, you know, a lot of people are already grandfathered, which is, that's, that's great and that's lovely, but for new residents, um, coming to our town, and the fact that they may purchase a piece of property and that, um, you know, they gotta hire a wetland scientist because of these new ordinance, when DES, which we spoke about tonight, already has, um, rules and regulations on the state already in place. So, as a voting member of the planning board, I would have to, I would like to say that I would vote to not have any new wetlands ordinance, let the state DES, um, be the ones to implement the, the rules and the regulations. Um, when you start wet, hiring wetland scientists, it's very expensive, so to me, it creates a burden on new residents of the town. And I feel that DES has very good rules in place that protect our water and our, and our property.
So what do you wanna do? You wanna go wetlands ordinance with DES is the rule?
Of the rules and the regulations, which they would have to follow anyways.
So, we're gonna, it's simple.
I just, I wanted my, that to be a motion-
Yeah.
-and that, to make sure that it's documented.
I think what we, what I wanna do tonight is, as, as Russ was saying, the, the motion that was made last time was somewhat ambiguous, there was some question about whether we were voting on the changes or the changes plus the ordinance. So, I wanted to clarify that, what we're voting on, and then vote on the ordinance.
Okay, fair enough.
So, we're gonna do the changes and then we're gonna vote on the ordinance itself?
Yes. Present.
So, there's a few more in there that I, I, I mean-
Oh, no.
Well, no, there, no, when I got thinking about all this, there, there was definitely some more stuff in there that I did not dig, that I thought that it's gonna be biting us in the end, and then so like, the DES rules that are already in place for wetlands, is there a lot of paperwork with that sort of stuff as far as what, that, that's what you wanna see is for the town wetlands to go with the DES rules?
Like they've been following.
For, for years.
For years, yep.
And, and so that would pretty much, that would cover every single thing that's, we've done?
No.
So, so, okay, so now we're getting back to the, what was it, the Gaza book, is that where, is that what, this is what, how, where this is coming from, the levels, the levels of wetlands?
Yeah, the levels of wetlands and what you can do in those are more restrictive than-
DES rules. Okay, so I follow where she's coming from and, and, so you've got, we're, we're gonna be limited more under these level one and level two.
Yes, that's right.
Instead of DES, DES would be not quite so-
Yeah.
-hard on us.
Yeah, exactly.
And whenever you hire, just like we're talking tonight about what something's wet and not, now granted, I know there's soils, I, I use an example of, we're working down in Peterborough right now, and the layer of, of, and you, you're gonna understand even a little bit better than me, but it goes from loamy to sand to clay, to the kinda clay that doesn't drain any water, okay? But that's, that's amongst, you know, 'cause we're pulling stumps and, you know, trying to make the guy a field, right? Make it agricultural, and the water just sits there, okay? So, is that affecting somebody's wetlands in a sense? I'm just trying to say soils can sometimes change.
Yeah.
Um, you don't always know what's below it, so that could go the other way, do you know what I mean? Where it's good draining, it might not look as good from the top to the bottom. But there's a lot of science, there's a lot of guessing, if you ask me, there's quite a bit of guessing at times. He made it, he does make a good point, you know as well as I do, when you dry out a lot and let the sunlight in, it's not as wet as it was before. Um, so that's, those are my, I feel like the amount of time that DES has been around and has actually gotten a lot more stringent, that's why when you drive down, you know, go on a lake now, you don't see a house on the shore, like my mom is fortunate enough to do, or I know other people that are even set on the, the, the Comm Comm, get to live right on the lake. It, 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 you know, the rules have already now made it that much more stringent to begin with, and now we're, to me, reaching out and, and trying to do it more, and that's why, but-
Let me just give you an example of, you know, for example, Lake Winnapocket is a level one body, and the idea is that you don't want, you don't want these less than one of these small lots with small homes and not enough space for septic systems and, I mean, so, it's, you know, we're requiring a setback from the lake, we're requiring, um, you know, they're trying to get a handle on, on that, so we don't have, you know, somebody's owns a big chunk of land on Lake Winnapocket, and it's, "Oh, yeah, we're gonna divide this up into two acre lots," you know, or one and a half acre lots, or, you know, I mean, we're living with the decisions that were made with Pillsbury Lake in the sixties, right? And that's been sort of problematic for the town, so what we're trying to avoid is more issues that come along with all of that development.
Yeah, but there again, you know, yeah, I just don't, I don't feel good about the fact that I got what I want, and now I'm gonna make it more stringent, so you, you can't have it.
Can't do what you, what they have.
Right, and I, and I have, I don't feel that's the American way, and I don't feel that's the, that's the, but I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that you, I get where you're coming from.
Right.
It just, it just, you're leaving, once these things go through, we're leaving it in hands where at least DES has people on, on their-
Right.
-that are educated and all that, you know? I feel that sometimes maybe I'm just educated to be dangerous. You know what I mean? But, but so you could get somebody that's way one way or way the other way, and, and I, that's why I feel like now you're creating, um-
Well, I, I respect your opinion.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's a lot of people in town feel the same way you do.
Yep, okay, fair enough.
I, I, you know, I, I haven't lived in Webster nearly as long as you folks have.
Right, I get that, too, it's, it's all cool.
And, you know, I've seen rampant development, I've seen what that can do, and what the problems that brings, and, um, the less, and it's gonna come, it's going to come to Webster, you know, it will. There is gonna be somebody come in and do another big subdivision, there's gonna be-
We don't make it that easy.
Apartment.
Well, actually, I mean, my, my property was gonna be a big development, the only reason it wasn't was the market tanked, and then the partnership fell apart and-
Right.
It, it will happen.
It will happen.
But people need a place to live, that, and I, you know, I have kids, I, you know, like, well-
I agree.
That's kind of, sorry, the purpose of the planning board is that you know what's gonna happen.
And so you wanted to do it carefully.
Shape it in the way-
Right, but see, I feel like we're shaping it to be more-
Right.
-you know, cost, right, so I said it in my, in my thing. I feel like we're shaping it to be costly and, and, and we're, we're trying to tell people what to do with their property.
This motion doesn't approve the ordinance.
Okay.
This just allows the voters to vote on it.
Uh, well, no, I understand that, but I wanted to make sure that it's on record that has kinda come in a little bit on the backside, that, that I am not in favor of them, of the wetland. That's, I wanna make sure that's clear.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do all that stuff, so go ahead.
I, I'm gonna go with what Russ is saying.
Fine, ten.
What we're voting on is not the ordinance, we're voting to approve it, to send to the town.
Perfect, I got it, I got it, yep.
And then the town folks get to decide-
Mm-hmm, fair enough.
...what they want, yes.
Okay, but can we change some things in this?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, there's some things I think need to be addressed, if this goes to the town, if, no, but if it goes to the town, I think there's some things that, uh, you know, you gotta give them the benefit of the doubt, just like this guy, okay? So he's, if he does some regrading and whatnot, I mean, we already gave him basically the permit, but just say if that's, uh, was a different situation on Pillsbury Lake, uh, can't really stop them to do what they're doing. But there's some things like, you know, the, the degrading of the land here, no permits, well, maybe we should look, give them, I mean, we can make that decision, but we ought to be able to be entitled to make it.
Well, didn't you add as part of it, sorry, I shouldn't be interrupting.
No, no, no.
No, 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 you.
You just speak your piece.
But on the last part of it, it says may require, waive the requirements of the CUP application and the permit. So that means if somebody came in, they would draft the permit, and then the planning board could say, oh, this is, this is in the spirit of the ordinance, we understand. We're just gonna waive the permit.
Right, but some of it's no permit, um.
Not permitted, yeah.
At all, I mean, they can't get a permit, so at least the cup, you got a little, you had an option, okay? If it's in, if it's in here, you got an option, if you just have the no permit, you, you got zero options, not permitted, right?
That's right.
So, so I, 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 I would like to see at least the grading of the land definitely with the cup, and, and then this here, the change of the flow of the water, same thing. Uh, in that way, we have at least an option on that. Scrap, uh, this right here.
Yeah.
Take that out, period.
Yeah.
I want that out of there.
Yep.
And, and then, uh, there was something else that I saw that needed to be, uh, done away with, like, I don't know what I.
Page eight, uh, my waive, my
The waivers, right.
Requirements of the cup application.
Yeah, yeah, so get rid of that part of it, take, take and re, you know, do that. But I thought I had one other thing that was bugging me that I saw.
On page three, draining, dredging, filling.
Yeah, well, that was two, oh, the, on the buffers of the two acre lots in size, I mean, that's only four hundred by four hundred, two acres, fifty feet, you know, seems.
Four hundred by eight hundred.
What's that?
One acre is.
Yeah, acres two hundred by two hundred, acre, one acre.
Well, that's just our current, because we already have thirty foots.
So, so like, the buffers on the edge of the wetlands, I mean fifty feet, that's from here to there, away. It seems to me like that's plenty far enough for a buffer. Twenty-five feet would be, you know, halfway, that's still a pretty good buffer from whatever you were doing, like a, say, the edge of your septic to the wetlands. It just seems like that fifty feet is quite a bit.
Wondering if that would be a substantive change.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Two big things.
Okay, well, that's what I'd like to see happen.
It was just the way he said, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like.
I know what people are after, but what, it, it's your, I, I get it, the conservation.
This is no longer an open hearing, and that's my worry, that we can't be changing a lot of stuff
Yeah.
from when we had the open hearing.
Yeah.
I think that's a bait and switch, isn't that what it's called?
Yes, I, I'm with you on that.
I mean, we've got
I'm sorry, but.
We've got these changes that were discussed at the open hearing.
Okay, so, but, but we need to do the grading of the land too, that, that needs to kind of follow with the flow of the water, and, and they need to have an option there, that, that's gotta be.
Well, let's, uh, you, you, do you know what, do you know what he's talking about here?
I don't have, I don't have, I looked in my papers, I thought it was.
Right here, just the, the one up on the, the top, top one, where it's got the regrade contour. Yeah, I think that needs to be able to have a, an option instead of not permitted.
The question is, can we change that at this point?
Can we?
I would have to ask legal on that one whether that would be a substantive change or not.
Okay.
I'm not sure, and I'm not.
Right, can, so will you be able to find that out then?
We would have to wait to vote on it to the next meeting.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what the timeframe looks like.
Cause that's January, and it has to.
Yeah.
The fifth Tuesday before town meeting has to be ready.
Wow, that's not very far.
Um, yeah.
Oh, my God.
I think.
And we can amend it later, if that is something.
I know what the, you know, I mean, I know they're all worried about this, but it's like it, it, none of us are hurting anything, yeah. That's my point.
We don't tell.
You know.
Town meeting, I think it's in March, right?
Yeah, this thing has, um, we've given everybody pretty much what they want on this thing. I mean, people have come in with some really good suggestions, and we've looked at it, we've clarified it. I can't think of, I mean, there are things in here that I don't like.
Right.
And there are things in there, I'm sure, any one of us could, could.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna vote for it, so it doesn't matter.
Well, all I hope is that.
Oh, there'll be signs all over town, don't be worried.
I hope that you
Big ones.
Vote to approve it to the town, that's what I.
In other words, so that it can go to the town.
It can go to the town.
Cause if we don't.
If we don't pass it, it doesn't go to the town.
At all.
And I think that would, that would be a tragedy.
Why?
The town deserves the right to vote on it.
Yeah.
Well.
And they can't if we don't pass it on to the town.
I get, and I appreciate where you're coming from.
Well, that's not entirely true, but, because the select board can make a petition warrant to amend the zoning ordinance, and twenty-five citizens can sign off on it and get it on there.
Okay.
So it's gonna go one way or the other, pretty much.
I don't know. Well, 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 what it, what it, I, I think what, I think what Craig's saying is he's ready to move on, he feels it's in good, in its good place.
Yeah, yeah. I'd just like to see.
Me, personally, I don't see the need for it. I don't see, I, I don't see, I, I don't know that, that everybody would understand it
Yeah.
as much as that, I'm not saying even it takes me a lot, and I have to deal with like this stuff, so that makes me nervous, because
Yeah, it's.
what happens is you, when you, you, I get what you're saying, but you gotta really know how to wrap your arms around this, so people might not even know how it affects them. Now, you would say, well, why don't they figure that out? Well, cause it, it takes time to do and, and effort, and, and they probably think, well, that won't affect me. What, where I'm concerned and where, and why I, you know, ran and why I'm here is.
Kids?
Yeah, I, I believe this town is, is a great town, I want it to be affordable to live in. When you start, in my mind, my opinion, you start passing these kind of ordinance, and people not totally knowing what that's gonna do to their property, even though some people are grandfathered, it creates an overreach of government in my mind, and I think it makes it not affordable to live here. And I, I just think the consequences come down the road. Like Craig's saying, he's saying it from even a different point of view and consequences that, you know, we might have a development come in town or whatever, you know, but, hey, I had, I was fortunate to have a place to live, you know what I mean, and purchase, I just, I just feel that that doesn't make it, you know, you know, a free country, and I don't think it makes, I don't, I'm not against a, a town growing.
Oh, I'm not either.
Well, it just some of the, you know, and I, and I want clear, clean water and all that, but there again, DES is pretty stringent in a lot of their rules, thus the reason you don't see houses on lakes anymore, they're a setback. My mom's fortunate, she lives on Winnapocket, and she can spit to the lake, you know what I mean? Um, but, but to me, it should be more of a, you know, we have rules already in place, and then you're gonna have a governing body that may not be us, could be somebody else, that may not even understand what they're endorsing, so that's, that's my two cents.
Could be a conservation commission.
So, um, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
And, uh, I move to accept the November twenty, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one version of the wetlands watershed ordinance with the following minor changes. The language on paint three, page three, to be changed to draining, dredging, filling, which changes the flow of water, to strike the contradictory sentence on page four that states, no COPs issued for one hundred foot buffers in district one, and to change the language on page eight to be my waive, my waive requirement of the COP application permit. This is the ordinance that was voted on, and this ordinance to be voted on at the two thousand twenty-two town meeting.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Got it.
Can I, I have a question, you can ask a question, just so I know how I'm voting. If I vote against that, that's my right to do.
Yep.
It doesn't change anything necessarily, it doesn't throw it out, but I, and it's not that I don't accept the changes, like, I, at least they're going in the, the direction that, the way DES is written now, but I don't, I wanna vote that I don't want the ordinance at all. Is, do I have to accept, go one way or the other?
Either way if you want it.
Okay.
Yeah, here, here, but all we're voting on is to put it to the town, that's, that's what we're voting on right now.
So no cups issued on page four?
So that's the one where you said.
Right, right, I, I've seen that right here.
Where you changed it so that you could do it, and then there was a contradictory sentence that said you couldn't do it. So we have made one thing without removing it.
So it's basically, we do, we do, a CUP is possible?
Is possible in the hundred foot buffer in district one for driveways, because that's something you had changed at the previous hearing. Just the language didn't get removed.
So we're gonna, we're gonna put cups here, right, that's what I'm understanding?
Well, there's only one cup.
Just in level one, but we're not gonna do it in.
No, it changes a little water, we changed that one.
Right, right here.
Right here, yes.
But you're not gonna put a cup here, level, in level two.
I can't figure out why I don't have my version.
Well, cause I left mine in my bag that I didn't flush back from work like I was supposed to.
So can we change that in level two, two, so they're the same?
If, if.
We rewrite that, so.
Um, no, let me put it this way.
You don't wanna change it?
I don't wanna change it, I mean, if you were gonna, if you were, if you were the big supporter of this thing, and we're gonna vote for it, and we're gonna, I'd make that change. But since you're not gonna vote for it, what the hell difference does it make?
Well, I, I just think it should be, we should have those, those two things really, in my mind.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, I agree with you on that, but, but.
I, I think that we should, we should be able to take and have that option, cause, cause that's not gonna be fair.
Could, what do you think, Russ, can we vote on this or not?
So I don't know if that would count as a substantive change.
I think it would, I mean, because.
I think it needs to be, so, at least, somebody has that option, if, cause it's, I mean, it, it's all possible and not affect anything, you know, it might be for the better, i- i- is what, I guess my, that's what my thing is, is when I got really looking at that, it would, it could possibly work out for the better.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it being a CUP, I just don't know if we can change it at this point.
Yeah, that's my, that's, I'm with you on that.
So can we make a motion for Russ to look into changing it?
You mean if?
Meaning not you changing it, but looking into it, if, if, can we put it, can that be changed?
Well, we'd still have to vote on it before the, so it might have to schedule a work session to do the vote again. But, cause I, I have to contact the town attorney to ask that question.
Um, as I said, I'll repeat myself, there are things in here that I don't like, and there are things that you don't like, and that you don't like. And I think we're done making changes.
But now, so now we vote on if we accept it to go to the town?
Right.
Right, and if we, if, if, if that vote was to, if, if we were to vote aga, if we were to vote, if I was to vote against it, let's say, let's just say, then, then what happens?
Well, it, I mean, it depends on the majority, if, if a majority of us.
I'm gonna substate. I, I, I really do.
No, but listen, Addie, 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 listen to what, what, listen to what he's saying, I believe I am understanding this correctly. And there again, we, there may not be the votes here, but if, if we were to vote it that we didn't, it wasn't ready to go to the town, the town meeting, okay? Right, if, if, if I, if I vote against it, let's just say you did, just, just like you did, I'm not saying you're going to, um, that what, what happens to it next?
So if you didn't want it to go to town?
That's right.
So you got options, you could fix it to the point where you wanted to bring it to a different town meeting? Table completely, that's up to the board, I mean, you can.
It, but it could, it, just if it was, it could possibly, at this point, unfortunately, all the hard work, I'm not, I feel, it could sustain it
Well, and then there's, you know, the
From a, this.
Twenty-five people could go to a different addition and put that one forward to go on the ballot.
Okay, so that's a possibility that that could, they could, twenty-five people could change everything and make it.
They can make it to go to the vote.
To what they wanted to say.
What's it, what's written now?
For what they wanted to say.
What they wanted to say.
Right.
So they could change.
How about if they just don't want it to say anything, can they, can twenty-five people do that if they wanted to throw it out?
Well, you get to vote on it.
He gets to vote.
I mean, we, right now, if you wanna throw it out.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, no, if you wanna throw it out.
I mean, I'm new to this too, and I'm reading this from the planning board.
If you wanna throw it out, your vote no now would, you would vote no.
Okay, got it.
Because then it wouldn't, you know, if you're in the majority, then it wouldn't go to the town.
Right, that would be if I was in the majority, but, okay, got it, so if I, if I, if, if there was enough majority, no.
I was worried about what we can do, and
Right.
the other people worry about what they can do.
Yeah, got it.
So there's a motion on the table here.
Didn't you second?
Yep.
No, it was seconded.
So.
I don't like it.
I, I say nay.
I'm in favor, two in favor, do you wanna vote?
And you're gonna abstain and?
I'm gonna abstain, cause I, I, there's, there's some stuff that, I mean, I would, the, the, this right here, the not permitted is like, I, that's not giving anybody any options to, to do what they need, if they could possibly, there's no option there. It's not permitted, so it's like end of discussion, at least if there was a cup, you, you could take it, have an option to look at
Well, once again, if it passes, and you're on the planning board, we could do that as amendment the next year, to get that put in as an amendment.
So you could get.
It has to go to the town meeting again to go through the amendment process, to amend it.
But if, 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 if he was yay, it would go forward, if he nays, then it would be a tie in a sense to.
Right, it would probably have to wait to the next planning board meeting to vote again.
Right.
And can we change it then?
So, once again, we're getting closer and closer to.
Yeah, I don't care about the time thing, can we change that? If, if the next planning board meeting, could we possibly change that if we, if I say no way, at the next meeting?
I mean, I can, if the board wants me to, reach out to the town attorney and ask them if that would count as a substantive change.
Is that okay? I know, I know you have a lot of time in this, but, but I just, I mean, you're taking away the rights of the rights.
It gets you guys, doesn't it?
Really, uh, I got grandkids, six of them, and I'm just thinking down the road, when it comes time for them kids, I know three of them will stay in town, and it's, that possibility of not permitted will not really go over too well, and I own a lot of land, and I just, if, depending upon where kids wanna go, I got on the end of Lake Winnapocket, forty something acres, and, and it's Knights Meadow Marsh. If one of those kids wants to build there, there's a possibility that some of these rules could rent that.
And that goes for anybody that moves into town, that, you know, we're fortunate to live in a town with a lot of planning and land.
Right, but I'm just thinking of my own. I'm, I'm just thinking of my own personal, what I can see
That's exactly why I said nay.
Down the road, these kids, they gotta go somewhere, and if you got land for them, and then all of a sudden, you can't do this, or this, or that, then you don't have land. You know, that's, that's, I guess, where my, where, where I.
Or it can become very expensive.
Yeah, right, but, but it just, I, I guess I just have, that, that problem of not, the not permitted is what I'm having an issue with.
Let's ask Russ, can, can we vote, I mean, these are substantive changes, right?
So the ones we had done previously were not substantial, because those were already agreed upon, we're only changing grammar, pretty much, and striking something that was already changed at the previous hearing.
Yeah.
But adding two more uses I'm not sure on.
And you're not comfortable without checking with the attorney?
Yeah, correct.
So.
Cause I don't wanna make a mistake and throw out the whole process.
One of them we already did.
We did.
One of them you already did at the previous.
It's only, it's only one thing that we're asking about.
But we didn't do, we didn't do the other, the, the other
Yeah.
the other three, and, and I mean, it's like the grading and recontoring of the land, uh, it's not, I, I, I mean, I'm just thinking, I allowed to myself that you'd have to do a little bit of that to make it, but I mean, it's not as if it's gonna, it, it wouldn't affect any different of what's happening, but you might have to do that to get like this guy with his house.
That's right.
Way or something, and sure.
You know, so.
I don't, I don't, I mean.
But, but if it's not permitted, then you're done.
Well, then we also have the ZBA process, so somebody can go to the ZBA for a hardship.
But don't they have to have a wetland scientist be part of that?
No, I don't think so.
Cause there, that would be.
Only, only a wetland side if, if there's a
Is a dispute.
A dispute, that's the only reason you'd have to go.
But they need one there.
Because they could go to the zoning board of adjustment and say, I know it says it's not permitted, but I can't use this land at all if I don't do something, and the zoning board.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, they have the common sense to, to say what they should say, but that's a risk you take.
And again, the
There's a lot with if they're at.
The intent of this, and I'm just an interpretation, but, you know, if you're gonna build a house or whatever, you're gonna have to do some driveway or something, you're gonna have to do stuff.
Push your way, yeah.
But what we're aiming for is major, you know, major stuff.
Technically, this would be somewhat of a, it's right directly across from the water from here to there. And that's what, I have two lots, right directly across from Lake Winnapocket.
How big are they?
They're twenty acres apart, one of them is Knights Meadow Marsh, I, I mean, that is my piece of land, and so I.
So we're, we're a buddy, no, not quite.
No, you're not, you're ways from me, yeah, you gotta love walk, we can get that.
I, I.
All right.
So, so this is what my problem is, is I'm thinking of my grandkids.
Yep, I understand.
And, and that is where I'm having a problem. And, and that is where I'm having a problem with this, because I don't want the conservation commission to say, hey, you can't do this, not permitted.
Well, the conservation commission doesn't have any.
Well, they will when it comes time to do that COVID permit, because that can guarantee you that they will know. I've been there, I know how it works, it's not the first.
Well, they don't, they don't, legally, they don't have much.
No, but they can come out, and they do voice their opinion, and they can make a problem.
They can voice their opinion.
Well, and sometimes they get, like, if you had to go in front of, like, the zoning board, they give their opinion there, and then before you know it, there's a problem, and that's.
It is gonna happen, that's gonna happen.
It is.
That, that, that's a guarantee in this town, that is gonna happen.
There's gonna be conflict.
Yes, because they don't want to see it, and, and it's, that, that is where I have my, I have an issue with that.
So I think, again, I may, as we're, as we're voting, but if you vote, if you want to vote, yeah.
We've already voted.
Well, you substan.
He's abstaining, we voted for it.
So it'll go forward then?
It'll go forward to that.
Well, so, so we're not.
But we can see if that's a substantive change.
But if it is.
If it isn't, then we can change that.
Uh, yeah, because if, if this, I want that changed, in other words, I'm gonna go on a zero, on, on a no vote.
Well, you, that's not what just happened, then, because you would have to say nay.
Well.
Because it might not, correct?
Yeah, you would have to say no.
You'd have to say no.
Okay, so, so I would have to say no, but you would check this out to, to see if we can change these three not permitted to cups, if I say no, then.
We already voted here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we already voted.
Well.
I'm not sure he, I think he was thinking that it was.
Right, I, I mean, so we're not gonna change those three.
Not tonight.
No, but, okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm all in favor of changing, I don't have any problem with changing that, okay?
I want to see it changed, that's, so I, I mean, I, I, can I change my vote?
I'm not sure the rules on that one. Like, once again, I'm new to planning board stuff, too, I would have to check the legal thing to change the vote.
I want to change, the, I, I mean, I'm not gonna vote for it if we can't change those, those three.
Goes to the next meeting.
I want, I want to see those changed, this, these here levels.
So if there's a tie, just so you understand, so if there's two nays and two yays, what then happens is it goes back to the planning board.
We'd have to wait until we had five members.
And in the meantime, in the meantime, Russ can look into those. Am I wrong, just correct me, I just want to make sure that, I know what it's like sometimes, not understanding what's going on, because it's happening so quickly.
Right.
Um, you, then that point, you can see about changing those ones that, that Addie has a problem with, correct? That, that gives you the time to do that, not that you want any more time spent on this.
No, I mean, I'm gonna get this over with.
You know what I mean, I get it, I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I, I guess I don't want to see that etched in stone, that, I guess, I'm, is where my problem is, is that those two things etched in stone, no permit, I have a problem with that, I do. And it will bite us down the road.
Biting us right now.
I know, I know it is, I know it is, and I mean, I'm not trying to be a hard ass, but it's like, I just.
No, I, I, I respect your opinion, Addie.
Yeah, I, I guess, I'm just looking out for down the highway.
Yeah.
My kids, you know?
And even though, you know, as I take it, people in general, have had it too, you know what I mean?
But.
Or somebody that wants to do something with their property.
No, and once again, it's not whether it's gonna pass or not.
That's right, so, so.
It's just the town voters get to come in, vote on it, if they vote they like it, it passes, if the majority of people say they don't, it doesn't. You're just giving them the ability to vote now.
Right, but like I, like, whatever, we, you know what I said.
I know what you said.
Yep, we don't, I don't need to repeat myself.
So it's, it's done then, I take it.
I.
If you sustain, unless you can't change your vote, it's, it's done, right?
I don't know, the chair, so do we want to do a roll call vote, or just have a roll call? I think I thought we did do a roll call vote.
So can I make an amendment that we change those, oh, if that still does not work?
Right, right.
Doesn't work.
I would, I would, I would really like to get this off the table today.
I, I get it, I do get it, I do get it, but I, I guess that's the thing, that I, I guess when I get really looking at that, I don't dig it, this.
Do I get to decide here, Russ?
Yeah, you're the boss.
Oh, now it's your turn.
You're the boss, so, if that's.
What, what's, what's the rule, what's the ruling here? We can just have the motion, I mean, do the vote, and have a roll call vote, because it's not clear what everybody voted, and then just do a roll call.
But I'm on just this point?
Oh, no, I was gonna say do a roll call vote, because we're not, now we're not sure whether the motion even passed or not.
Well, it did pass.
Because weren't you arguing that you didn't want to vote that way?
Well, it was, the vote was taken.
Yeah, I abstained from it, so it's like, that's.
Now, the motion passed, so that's the form of the ordinance. From my understanding is, once you accept the ordinance, it's accepted, and that's the final version. That goes to the voters, because it's been accepted.
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
I want you to look into those three things.
Yeah.
I want you to look into that.
See if we can make a change. If, I mean, if, maybe next meeting, we can have a motion and a vote on just those changes, I mean, we already voted.
Right, right, if we could do that, that's cool, I, I think that that, that down the road is gonna be haunting badly, and, and it's not really, that gives you an option.
Well, let's do that, let's, let's.
Let's do that.
So you're gonna make a motion to have me contact the town attorney?
Yes, let's have.
Because I'm gonna use leave line for that, so.
I make a motion that Russ contact the town attorney about amending the not permitted to COP.
Yes.
For which two sections, could you just circle them for me?
Yeah, the re, re, uh, contouring and grading of the land, both level one and level two, cups, and then drain and dredge and fill in, changing the flow of water, level one, level two, both, both cups. That way, that gives everybody a chance.
Okay.
Instead of just not permitted.
So we have a motion, we have a motion on the table, and let's vote on the motion.
Aye.
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 This is to have the attorney look at it.
Okay, just have the attorney look at it, or have Russ look, yes.
Yeah, I'll send it in on Monday.
And see if we can.
Fix that.
Fix that at our next meeting, vote on the amendment, about that amendment.
Got it.
And the other one. I, I'm sorry, I just.
You're trying to do what I think is best.
Well, no, I, I, yeah, I, I, when I get looking at the thing, I don't really, it, that's not the best way out.
All right.
I, I think our next meeting will still be at more than five weeks before town meeting, so.
Hopefully, we'll have more members.
It would be the 20th of January, so one, two, three, four, five weeks would be the 24th of February.
Okay.
So.
So we would still have time.
So there's still time.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, now we can.
We good with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
You almost have to approve minutes.
Okay.
I'm gonna go home.
I know, I know, hopefully, I have supper waiting.
Okay, review of draft minutes from last, uh, November 9th and November 18th. So take, take a look at those minutes, and let me know if you have any problems.
Can we, um, can we move to approve both in one motion?
Yes.
Yes, you can, if they're gonna be as written.
Who's good at grammar, because I'm not, so I'm not gonna catch anything like that.
Well, just make sure the dates are right.
Was I really there? No.
The one on the back.
Yeah.
No, this is good, I mean, Russ, Russ.
He's on it.
He does a pretty good job.
Yeah, he does.
So I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting November 9th and November 18th as submitted.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I can't vote.
You're in favor, aren't you?
So, so we're all good with that, and, and if that works, I'm, I'll be, I'll be all that.
But what do you vote for?
All right, well, we're adjourned the meeting.
When it comes time to. What would you think?
Uh, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
I can't make a motion.
We're glad to have you here.
There's some things.
Thanks for, uh, thanks for coming, Russ.